We will now move on to our 6.4930, a presentation of Lake County Behavioral Health Services, fiscal year 2021 and 2022, External Quality Review Final Report. And we'll invite Director Metcalf up, and I don't know if you wanted to, did you want to come up too as well?
Yeah, I need her.
Okay. Ms. Jones?
This is new, this gate thing.
It's a test.
Matthew just texted and said he's going to help us with the, oh, maybe he's all over it. Great. Thank you, Matthew, wherever you are. Well, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Todd Metcalf. I am the Director of the Bay Area Services Department. What we're doing today, this is something new. We've never done this before in front of the board. You've heard me mention over the years that our department, I shouldn't say endures, but we're audited a lot by various entities. This, today, this presentation, we'll try to keep it short, is a result of what's called the EQRO audit, which we had in December. EQRO stands for External Quality Review Organization. What this means is the Centers for Medicare/Medicaid require mental health plans to be audited on an annual basis. The California Department of Healthcare Services oversees the mental health plan, but the Centers for Medicare/Medicaid require the Department of Healthcare Services to ensure that we are audited by an external organization. We do this every year. The name of the organization that has been auditing us, at least ever since I've been in this position, is called Behavioral Health Concepts Incorporated. So, Matthew, can you move to the next slide, please? Thank you. So, this sort of explains what all is involved in these reviews. And so, as I said earlier, we want to bring more of these audits to this board. It's all about our, you know, our goal in being transparent and ensuring that the community and the board understands what we're doing. This is going to show the good, the bad, and the ugly, but we want to be transparent. And so, Elise Jones, our Administrative Deputy Director, pretty much put this together. And so, I'm going to let you drive this presentation. I will chime in as needed, and I promise not to be a backseat driver. But I will let you take it from here, and with your permission, I will pop in as needed.
My pleasure. Ooh, that's live. Okay. It's, Matthew's behind the scenes there, so we can go to the next slide. Oh, all right. So, there is a methodology to these reviews. The reviews are conducted by interdisciplinary teams who have a variety of professional and lived experience. And pre-COVID times, this group would actually come in, we would host them at our department. They would sit, we would give them any and all documentation that they requested. And now, in COVID times, they have been conducted via Zoom, which is, which is cool, and we will see how that continues. So, the teams review and utilize qualitative and quantitative data to provide feedback to our department about how we're doing on a variety of metrics. And they also conduct interviews with key county staff, contracted providers, advisory groups, beneficiaries of services, family members, and other important stakeholders. And this data, both the quantitative and qualitative, is used to generate performance measures in the form of tables and graphs, which will cover a few of those that I felt told an important story. And so, they also derive data from monthly Medi-Cal eligibility system files from the Department of Healthcare Services, short Doyle Medi-Cal claims, and inpatient consolidation files. So, it's not just data from us, it's also data that we have submitted from the Department of Healthcare Services. Thank you, Matthew. All right. So, there are some significant changes and initiatives that we're really pleased to report. We have expanded our access team. Our access team is the first point of contact for people who are trying to access services at behavioral health. And that has been an evolution. We have reconstructed our access process to expedite entry into services and assessment, and that has dramatically improved our timeliness with regard to initial intake and assessment. We also plan to join or opt into the organized delivery system, and your board can anticipate a presentation from our department on April 26 for more information. In fiscal year 2122, we dramatically increased our community outreach and engagement through use of media outlets, press releases, health fairs, and we also, through the wonderful cannabis grant funds, were able to purchase a cargo van. And we hope to actually soon bring it out to the world, but it's really beautiful. And that van is really targeting at-risk communities and bringing needed supplies and outreach to them. So, we have also joined, this is huge, so we're part of Cal-MHSA, and this is the Cal Mental Health Services Act. And so, through, through Cal-MHSA, we are joining a multi-county electronic health record. Your board had already approved us participating in a robust request for proposals process conducted by Cal-MESA, and that, that process led to the selection of a new EHR vendor, and we actually anticipate joining and going live with that new vendor on January 1, 2023. And it's our hope that this will be the next wave or evolution for us in collecting data. Data has been something that's been very important to us, and this is going to be an incredible tool, so very excited about that. We've also joined a multi-county innovation project to really evaluate our full service partnership program. FSP is our most expensive program in MHSA. It's, it's part of direct client services and supports, and this is, again, looking at our data as it compares to other counties implementing FSP and identifying where we can improve our FSP program and using both qualitative and quantitative data to identify appropriate performance metrics for that program, and we hope to present on that soon.
Very soon. And, and may I add, regarding the electronic health record system, we were one of how many pilot counties in, in helping with the development of and the selection of the vendor that will be operating this electronic health record system. And as Elise mentioned, and as I've mentioned, and you all have mentioned about data, our existing electronic health record system, although data gets entered into it, it's not the most streamlined, easy-to-use system in, in order to spit data out. And so, we've been very hopeful, and we've been very involved in the development of this new system, a lot of it around the collection and reporting of data.
Yes, actually, that implementation is phased, so not all counties are going to go live on January 1, but we were so excited and anxious to go live as soon as possible that we joined the pilot counties. We felt like, to be frank, our given system, we had really nothing to lose, so we're jumping in with both feet. Okay. The mental health plan, which is us, we operate a centralized access team, and as I stated, that's directly responsible for assessing and linking beneficiaries to specialty mental health services. And we served in fiscal year 2021, 610 adult beneficiaries, 299 youth, 51 older adults, and we obviously have two clinics, so this is across both of our clinics. And among those served, 25 received telehealth services in a language other than English, which I think demonstrates our intense efforts at cultural competency, efficiency, and outreach to underserved communities.
And we're very excited about the older adult piece, because that's, that's an area that our department hasn't been lacking, but our mental health advisory board has really been focusing on service delivery to older adults experiencing mental illness.
If you can use the microphone.
So, we recently just created an older adult team. We're still putting that together, so we're really starting to focus more on the older adult demographic.
So, there are key access components that the mental health plan is evaluated against, and this is a really delightful slide, because we met all of them. So, the first one is service accessibility and availability are reflective of cultural competence, principles, and practices. We were evaluated to meet that metric. Manages and adapts capacity to meet beneficiary needs, again, met. Integration and/or collaboration to improve access and service access and availability. So, on our access, through our expanded access team and efforts to streamline access processes, I, in hindsight, I wish I had provided a comparison of last year, but you can hopefully take my word for it, that it is dramatically improved from last year. All right, next slide.
Which, which is compelling because of the pandemic and still having to do a lot of work via telehealth. And we, we provided in-service, in-person services where and when we could, and of course, we still are. Our programs and services did not stop during the pandemic, but I think it's noteworthy to, to, again, say that's kind of a big deal, that we did meet those requirements despite, you know, COVID-19.
Thank you, Todd. And to any of our staff watching, that's a direct reflection of their dedication and passion for this work, so. So, the other performance measure here that I want to highlight is the percentage of eligible beneficiaries served by race and ethnicity. So, the light purple line demonstrates the number of beneficiaries, and they get that from Medi-Cal data. So, who are the people enrolled in Medi-Cal in our county? That's the potential of people who are eligible for our services, right? And so, of that, it shows the number of people in that demographic that we served. And so, that gap shows you exactly what it is, is a potential gap or a disparity. And so, for Native American people identifying as a Native American, not much of a gap, if at all, we're doing pretty well. The biggest gap, obviously, here is people who are of Hispanic/Latino descent. We know that our penetration rate for outreach and serving that population is low, and it's low even compared to the rest of the state and other similarly sized counties. And so, we have some theories about that. One of them is we know we have a very robust peer support center in Clear Lake, La Vos, that's dedicated to serving people of Hispanic/Latino origin, and they do a lot of work. They, they do an incredible amount of outreach. So, we're hypothesizing, maybe people are just accessing services through those non-traditional routes, because that's more comfortable for them, and there still is a lot of stigma in that community around accessing specialty mental health services. So, it's something that we're trying to unpack more, we definitely have our eye on it, and we hope that next year, we see some improvement or some trending of where we're having a better penetration rate into that population. Next slide, please. Okay. So, these are the overall penetration rates for everybody who's eligible across years. And so, the dark purple is us, that's Lake County Behavioral Health Services. This light purple is other small counties, and then the blue is just across the state. And so, you can see that we've actually been trending very positive with regard to this. So, in 2018, there is about a 2%, we're about 2% less in other small counties and the state in terms of our penetration rates of eligible, potential eligible beneficiaries. And that goes up over time, where we're probably about, I don't know, well, the percents are up there. So, what is that, like a 1% gap? And so, our hope is that when we come back again next year, we'll have closed that gap. So, that's a positive trend. All right, thank you. So, additional performance measures. So, as you can see, timely access is a really critical and key performance metric for mental health plans. It's really important that people receive the services that they need when they need them. And while we have dramatically improved our initial access, we definitely have capacity issues, and this is certainly no shock to your board. We do maintain large caseloads and increase in crisis calls, definitely, it waxes and wanes. We have longer wait times. So, once people come into services and they're assessed and deemed eligible for specialty mental health, we unfortunately have long wait times for services at times, especially, and this is quite unfortunate for children services, where we maintain a pretty lengthy triage, triage list. So, the triage list is exactly what it sounds like. We have kids that come into services, and we basically prioritize them in terms of acuity. So, kids that are very high acuity and high need, where they've been in and out of crisis, or maybe they're involved with systems like probation or child welfare, they're at the top of the triage list, and they're having outreach and engagement through a case manager, but it's not, you know, therapy, which we have quite a long triage list for. So, that's just an unfortunate reality. We have high turnover for our children's team, and it's just ongoing staffing challenges that impact our ability to provide services. Unfortunately, longer wait times for services is looking like it results in decompensation where people get sick. They wait for services, and they get sicker, and then they go into crisis because they're not receiving services that they might need. So, we do, we do have a quality management, quality improvement program that meets regularly and reports directly to leadership and, of course, our director. Part of that, we monitor compliance. Compliance is a small part of the overall quality improvement, quality assurance team. I do want to highlight that the mental health plan utilizes the following outcome or assessment tools. So, I won't read them off here, but you can see there are eight, I can't count, eight different tools that we use, and these are used at intake and ideally over time. So, the goal here, and what we really hope to realize with our new EHR, is that it's going to be embedded into our EHR and really easy for clinicians to go through these at intake and then at regular intervals, so we can track over time who's getting better or who's getting worse, and we can kind of make more targeted interventions. So, that's something really exciting that I believe is right on the horizon for us. Next slide. Next slide, Matthew, thank you. Okay. Here's a really fun table of other different quality, key quality components, and it's not as nice of a story as the access table, unfortunately, but here you are. So, quality assessment and performance improvement are organizational priorities, so I think that's self-explanatory, and EQRO rated us as partially met for that performance metric. Data is used to inform management and guide decisions, not met, so we have a lot of room for improvement on that. And hopefully, as I stated, our new EHR is going to elevate us into the future and be able to track those important performance and outcome metrics timely. Communication from mental health plan administration and stakeholder input involvement and system planning and implementation, partially met. Evidence of a systematic clinical continuum of care, not met. And so, what they mean by that is we have very clear benchmarks for when people need to go into different levels of services, and we can titrate up or titrate down people into high need and low need. So, we're not doing a very good job at that right now, we need to get better. And that's also part of the FSP innovation program, is that there are not clear eligibility criteria for that. It's unclear when people are ready to transition to or step down to a lower level of care. And so, I'm hoping that through that FSP innovation project, we're also going to use that data to inform our other systems level of care planning. Medication monitoring, partially met. Psychotropic medication monitoring for youth, that is not met, and there'll be more information about that here shortly. Measures clinical and/or functional outcomes of beneficiaries served, not met, but as I stated, with all those outcome tools being streamlined into a new, more accessible EHR, hopefully, hopefully, we're going to get better at that. Utilize information from beneficiary satisfaction surveys, and so, that was not met. So, regularly, actually annually, we are required to collect consumer perception data, so that's just how beneficiaries of services feel about our services. And so, we could do a better job of integrating that into our decision-making processes. Consumer run and/or consumer-driven programs exist to enhance wellness and recovery, that was met, and consumer and family member employment in key roles throughout the system was met. All right, next slide. Thank you. So, beneficiary perceptions of care. So, as I stated, EQRO conducts consumer perception surveys as well as consumer family member focus groups, and this yields qualitative and quantitative data, and the focus groups emphasize the timely access to care, recovery, peer support, cultural competence, and improved outcomes. So, they're really assessing beneficiaries about how they feel on those metrics. Next slide. So, we're happy to report that generally beneficiaries feel really comfortable with staff. They feel that staff are honest and reliable. A highlight, and it continues to be a highlight, is our peer support centers. So, we just get raving reviews from our beneficiaries about the importance of those peer support centers. Again, that non-traditional level of support has been really beneficial to the beneficiaries. And during the pandemic, case managers, peer support specialists have been a major source of comfort and support for our community, and it's been critical, you know, it's been a lifeline, think about during quarantine, how isolating that was, yet we had this very dedicated team of case managers and peer support specialists who just stayed connected with people. And they also, of course, link people to other resources in the community. So, next slide. The wait times in the perception of the beneficiaries varies, depends on the type of appointment. Our follow-up after missed appointments is, is mixed, and actually, that's something that we're addressing as perhaps part of a new performance improvement project. And beneficiaries are not really aware of different committees that they could be a part of or ways to give feedback more directly to our, our department or be involved, and so we need to do a better job at incorporating or including the community into those venues. One beneficiary did report that they completed the initial intake and did not have an assignment of, of a case manager and not receiving timely phone calls back from staff. And I would hypothesize that's because we are struggling to recruit and maintain staff, still recruit and retain, and it's difficult. Those caseloads do get high sometimes. Next slide. So, I'm sure you're aware there are myriad opportunities for improvement within our department. The most salient among those is the lack of clinical staffing, and human resources contribute to lengthy wait times, and as I highlighted, for children, that's a, that's a large triage list, waiting for, you know, primarily individual or group therapy, so they are getting some outreach and services, but it is definitely less than what they need. And so, we are seeing that contribute to children, sometimes escalating in and out of crisis, unfortunately. We're struggling with staff and resources to initiate and complete and stay up to date with our quality improvement and quality assurance activities. The EQRO also identified local budgetary constraints, some communication issues, staffing shortages, and lack of resources contributing to high caseloads, staff burnout, and staff turnover rates. We are not tracking and trending hiatus measures as required by Senate Bill 1291. That is, that is a high priority for me, and there are multiple barriers to doing that. Data collection and tracking, as you are all aware, has been very challenging, and so my hope is that this time next year, when we report on our EQRO, we will have resolved that issue. Next slide. So, here are what I felt the highlights from EQRO in terms of their recommendations. So, evaluate obstacles and implement strategies to decrease the children's triage team, quite obviously. We need to figure out and make more robust our existing QI staff resources and kind of get creative about the strategies to implement and, and make quality improvement projects a priority for our department. Not that they aren't, but we just, sometimes people are wearing, you know, two, three, four, five, six hats, and it can be challenging. Obviously, with burnout and the high caseloads, there have been issues with staff morale and people just feeling very overloaded, especially coming, I guess, coming out of the pandemic, you know, that was obviously personally challenging for staff, but then they had to, as healthcare providers, continue to put, you know, take care of people despite having very limited resources, and I think that that has taken a toll on our staff. So, we actually applied for and were awarded some supplemental block grant funding to support employee wellness, and we are launching a series of mindfulness workshops for staff, just for them to practice mindfulness skills and just focus on them, because we realize that it's very difficult to pour from an empty cup, right? So, the last one that I had addressed was to investigate the best practices and implement a medication monitoring system. And so, this is specific to foster youth and all youth, actually. It's very important, as you can imagine, to monitor the medications that youth are taking. Those should be very tightly controlled, and we want to make sure that we reduce the use of polypharmacy wherever possible. We don't want to see our kids on a lot of psychotropic medications. That is not ideal. Next slide. Oh, is that it?
I think that's it.
All right, well, thank you.
Thanks, Elise. Thanks, Elise, for driving that, and I wasn't that of a backseat driver after all. So, as, as I said earlier, this is something we want to continue to bring to the board. Hopefully, the next audit that we present will be the triennial, which means that we have one every three years. We had one in December. We're waiting on those results, and so, we'll bring that forward once we get them. But with that, does the board have any questions or comments about this? I'm hoping this was useful, because I think some of the data is very compelling, and I hope you think the same.
Right. In, in reading the, the report that they provided, it really helped, and, and seeing their recommendations, and then even the actual initiatives that you're going to pull forward with, with your recommendations, I see that they match some of their recommendations, which helps. And really getting down to where you're at helps progress for constructive, you know, constructive steps forward. So, so I was able to see some of that. I'm confused about some of the graphs, but I know it was, was it the group that did the Behavioral Health Concepts, they do that? Did they do that for the state too? Because I found the state document, they do the same percentage rates the same way, and I'm like, okay, that percent doesn't look the same. And then there's a graph a couple pages later that shows a different percent, so I don't know.
I believe the Department of Healthcare Services contracts with Behavioral Health Concepts to, to perform these audits on all of the state mental health plans. And again, this audit just speaks to our mental health programs, not substance use disorder.
I think Sam needs you to pull the microphone a little further.
This speaks to our mental health programs and not the COC, the Housing Continuum of Care, or Substance Use Disorder Services. I mean, they all overlap, but this is just specific to our mental health services.
Okay. Supervisor?
And that, that was one of my questions, was what's the breakdown? Because I see MHP, 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 but I didn't see that breakdown, so that was one of my questions. Appreciate that clarification. Absolutely appreciate this report. I, I have been asking and asking and asking for data, and while this is an analysis of data, it's not just data. It, in the long run, that's what we need, is how do we analyze the data to figure out where we stand today? And not to say, I, I don't mean to use the words of, I don't care where we stand, but at least we know what needs to get done and what we should be focusing on now with an analysis. My, my question for you is, you said that you have a report from last year. How long have you, have you been getting annual audits on this?
Oh, oh, yes, and I'd be more than happy to send that along.
We can, supervisor. They're also publicly available on our website, and we'd be happy to send a link. It's a little bit buried, we could be better about publicizing that, but yes, the public can read them, and they've been going on for forever.
Yeah. Because I, I think this is a great annual conversation, and as Ms. Jones was pointing out in one of the graphs, we were looking, it is about progress.
Let me turn off this audio here. There you go. That, that needed an echo. It's all about progress.
It's, it's all about progress. We know where we want to be, especially when we're comparing ourselves, but we can't just jump and go from whatever percent to 5% to 10% without understanding what the work is required to get there, and as long as we're moving in that direction, I think that that's, that's what we should all be aiming for, is progress. Wondering if you have a definition of what small county is, because what am I comparing myself to? Am I comparing myself to Eldorado, which is completely different demographic than what we have here? Or am I comparing myself to Mendocino? I, just kind of curious, I didn't see a definition for small counties.
That's a great question, supervisor, and it, the designation actually frontiers small, I don't have them all memorized, and they're by population, so just the number of, and probably population density as well. And so, we can provide that, I'm sure, I'm surprised it's not in the report, but we'll find that.
And maybe it is, and I missed that part, but I was just curious, what am I comparing myself to? The state, that's kind of a given, what I'm looking at, but couldn't tell for the small counties. In Clear Lake with La Vos, I'm just curious if there's a breakdown. Are you seeing a greater penetration of access to our Latino community members because of La Vos being in that area? And in comparison to, say, Kelseyville, where we have another large Latino population, that you're not seeing that same level of penetration? Just wondering if there's that physical accessibility facility in an area, how much that makes the difference versus not having that accessible facility? That'd be a nice breakdown to see, to see if maybe we need to look at splitting levels or creating another one, if that's even feasible. But just kind of curious about the level of accessibility and what the different penetrations look like depending on what's available in each community, because we know that transportation is not always the easiest for everyone to be able to access everything.
And that's what we are hoping to utilize our new cargo van to do. As you know, we have peer support centers. have peer support centers throughout the county, but people are sitting in these facilities waiting for folks to come. So with a van, we can go out, and you mentioned Kelseyville. That is an area that, that we definitely plan outreach. So this hopefully might be one of more, more than one van to come as we roll it out, no pun intended, and, and reach out to the community in order to reach those folks that aren't able to come to our peer support centers.
Awesome. And my last question is, the drug monitoring, absolutely agree that that's something that should be focused on. The idea of going from, correct me if I'm wrong, from an MHP to a ODS, as you stated in the beginning, is that something that would absolutely help us when it comes to the drug monitoring and things like that? Or is that kind of separate?
Go for it.
Okay. So there's a lot to unpack there. So ODS, Organized Delivery System, is specific to Substance Use Disorder Treatment Services. However, it is a step towards parity with regard to mental health and substance use disorder services. So this is my little pulpit here, but mental health as a whole has not had parity with healthcare, right? And that's changing through CalAim. So CalAim is a huge initiative to have parity, both in terms of rate of pay and also the expansion of services, special mental health services. Substance Use Disorder Treatment Services also have not had parity even with mental health. And so both of those initiatives are kind of bringing everything into the fold of healthcare as a whole and addressing the whole person. But specifically, ODS, again, is for Substance Use Disorder Treatment Services. So does that answer the question?
It, it has the potential to help, but it's not the fix. It still requires more to come.
Yes, it's, it's actually part of the state's overall plan to integrate mental health and substance use disorder services. And I believe they've thrown out a date of 2028 for that true integration. But this is, this is the state working to put those two things together.
And this is really useful because I'm actually going to a CalAim workshop tomorrow? I think it is tomorrow. I'll figure out when I read out my calendar. My last question is, we're talking about staff shortages and the inability to meet the actual needs. In there, it says that we have, on average, three or fewer, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I'm going off the top of the head, three or fewer services per person when other counties are seeing more, which means that they have access to certain things, and then it kind of drops off because that's not available. And then it says that 75% of all the services are brought to you by the county behavioral health, and 25% is brought to you by our contractors and things. To me, that, that, that sets a stage of what to look for and what to expand on, because we can't expect you guys to take on the entire role of everything. And when 75% of what's being offered is already going directly through you, so I hope that we're able to work with our partners to be able to expand what programs are available and eligible for our community members to access. So we can go from three or fewer to now three or more, so we can get to a better range of services to meet the needs of the people that we serve. So I appreciated this report tremendously, and I look forward to the future conversations this is going to bring up.
If I could just, if I could just share my screen real quick, I'll show you what I mean. I know it's not a reflection upon, but maybe you can explain, because I, you probably know this better than I do. So let me share my screen on this. And it's, oh wow, there we go. Share content, screen, and then, let's see here.
Is share screen enabled, Matthew?
Yeah, I had to press the button. It was my own fault.
Okay.
All right. And so let me go to right here. There we go. Okay. So you'll see, and I have a pointer. Maybe you can see, you probably can't see it. It's on, yeah, there it is. Okay. So first, like, I, I realized after reading this, it says monthly unduplicated medical eligibles, 19,672. And then here, it will say annual. So wondering if that is just the average monthly, and then like next month, it might be 19,750, or you know what I'm saying? So it is an annual number, and is it, it's an annual number, but the average for each month is like 19,672. I'm not sure if that's the case, because when you, when you multiply that by 12, we don't have that many citizens in the county. And so, and then it says, so it says 849 out of the 19,000. And it says here 71%. However, I calculated 4%. And then if you go over to, I think that's the one, no, that's, actually, it doesn't have that. Yeah, it doesn't even have that graph. You'll see, it goes straight to another table. But then when you go down to the Hispanic population, you'll see it says 8,694, and then 161, and then it says 18.5. And then when you go to the graph for the Hispanic calculator, you see it says that same number, if that makes sense. So, so they're calculating that according to this, and then we don't have a graph to show on the other one, except for right here, it says that we're at 70%, which would be, if we're at 60% eligible, which would be of our population right here, 60%, 59.7 of 32,937, which is this amount, and we're serving 841. That number wouldn't be 71%. It would be 4%. And I realize that all of these added up equal 100%, or actually 95%. So this Asian Pacific is like 0.5% or something. And then when you look over here, on, I think it's right here, does it say Asian Pacific? Yeah, right here. You'll see it says 2%. So I just, so I don't know if you guys can explain it, or if maybe the group, you know, the behavioral health concepts could explain that, because it's just, that, that's a little confusing. But I seen on their graphs, they do the same thing. So I, so I don't know, on the state graphs, it does the same thing. And so, so I just, I don't know if I, I just annotate that and note that. And that on your graph for, right here, where it says total 32,000, which is half of our population, basically, it says 100% here. However, 3, 3.6% is the percentage where my, my pointer is. And then when you look at the total right here, it says that same 3.6%, which the graph you showed on your presentation as well. So I just, I don't know how we figure that out, or maybe you can just give me an email showing how they calculate that, or whatever the case may be. But I just, I just, I was struggling with it. I was looking through it. So, but I know sometimes there's difference in how things are calculated. So I just wanted to highlight that, maybe.
Yeah, we'll have to get back to you on that one.
I must say, I'm impressed with your mathematical prowess.
Well, baseball has averages, so.
Nice.
I'll stop, scared. Yeah. All right. Are there any other questions from the board?
Horrible comment, just, you know, thank you very much for the report. I know we've had conversations about really tracking where we're going here. So appreciate the outside agency coming in, you know, and giving us a tool to measure between now and next year when we have this report. Would appreciate. And thank you for letting us know that the report is online, the other ones that have been done previously. You know, but ultimately, we got work to do. And, you know, this clearly lays that out for us. You know, there are 10 sections here, and only two are met. I know some say partially met, but, but we got a lot of work to do. And the real concerning ones, obviously, is the, the clinical continuum care, the psychotropic medication monitoring for youth, real important, because as you guys said, you guys are triaging right now when the crisis is happening. But that follow-up is so important, because if it's not there, it's just going to happen again and again. And it's going to go from being when they're adolescent into the adulthood. And that's the real, the real trauma that's happening to the families in our communities around, especially in the Native American community, and every community has astigmatism. We got to get over that. It is definitely something. But it's so important on the medication. If someone is supposed to be taking that medication, that we make sure the best of our ability, can't force someone to do it, but that is continual, because that's where it really falls apart. And like I said, we all, as community members, family members, understand, oh, it's crisis day, you know, so then everybody's in, up in arms, but then it goes away. It's just like some of our emergencies we have. When, when it's, you know, really bad, you see it. But there's so much more of that long-term recovery that needs to happen. So I appreciate this information. Want us to be at five of these met next year. Hate to put that on you like that, but you know, we need to be increasing that. We need to meet all these needs as closely as possible. So I appreciate it. We have a measuring tool. We're here to support you in those things. I think some of the decisions we've made, when you're talking about employee retention and morale and other things, that's a later on conversation on our agenda. So we, we hear that, but we also need to just keep making those strides and those steps. And hopefully, we're going to see a change in that next year when it comes back to. But greatly appreciate it, because it really helps us when we do get those calls, and we do all get those calls, I would think. You know, I can't be the only one that gets a call from someone who's concerned with, you know, the wait time to see a psychiatrist or other follow-up things that need to happen. So greatly appreciate it for the report. But here, as you guys are moving through this process, we're here to support you to help take care of our community. So thank you very much for today's report.
Anything, Tina?
No, just thank you for the report, and I agree. We have a lot of work to do.
All right. Any questions for us?
No, just thank you, and I know how to get ahold of you all.
Oh, wait, I, I forgot the public, my poll. I'll open up for public input. Anybody in the chambers have any comments about this item in this presentation? I don't see anyone in the chambers get up, and then I'm looking online. I don't see any hands raised. Two, three, two, one, and I'll bring it back to the board and close this item. And thank you again for the presentation. I appreciate the information. It was very helpful. A lot of pages to read and go through, but you know, it really was, it was good to be able to check and balance some things and look at them, you know, aside from those numbers, but that, like, that's them. So we'll figure that out from them, like, how you, you know, doing that. But either way, thank you.
Thank you, and more to come.